Voters, and I'm your facilitator for this part of the forum for candidates for Charleston County Consolidated School Board. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of the Charleston area. The League is proudly nonpartisan and does not support or oppose candidates or political parties. Our audience today is welcome to submit questions in the next 20 minutes in the comments section of the event's livestream on Facebook at facebook.com/LWCharleston. League-sponsored forums are being livestreamed on Facebook and available for later viewing on the League's website, L W Charlestown.org, on our Facebook page, and on vote411.org, the League's voter information website. Please tell your family and friends because, as we all know, informed voters are engaged voters. School Board offices are nonpartisan, so be sure to scroll through your entire ballot to get to the nonpartisan races. If you vote a straight party ticket, candidates for important offices like school board will not be voted. On November 3rd, Charleston County voters will choose candidates to fill five seats in three areas on the county school board: North Peninsula Downtown and West Ashley. Voting for school board is at large, meaning that all county voters vote for all candidates in all areas on the ballot. Due to a new state law, all that is going to change in two years when the governance structure is going to change to single-member districts. Candidates elected in this November's election will serve two-year terms. Because we have a large number of candidate, fortunate to have a large number of candidates, we're going to be using a candidates-in-the-round format. In the main room, I will call on candidates alphabetically by area for 60-second introductory statements. And next, the audience will be placed randomly in three breakout rooms. Candidates for the same area will be rotated among the rooms. In each breakout room, we'll have facilitators who will ask the candidates questions submitted by the League and by voters via Facebook and email. During the forum, Facebook and chat, excuse me, chat and Q and A are going to be turned off, and no questions will be asked that are directed to only one candidate or are of a personal nature. Then candidates will have 60 seconds to respond to each question. After about 25 minutes, candidates are going to be reassigned to the next room to meet another group of voters. All participants will be brought together at the end for one-minute candidate closing statements. And we ask candidates to please use their closing statements to summarize their major campaign points rather than to introduce a new topic. We have timers in each room who are going to signal the candidates when they have 30 seconds remaining and when their time is up. Brenda Sweat is our timer in the main room. There she is with signs. Thank you. Now, here are the candidates for Charleston County Consolidated School Board for the North area. And I remind our audience that voters countywide are going to be able to choose two candidates from the, for the North area. We have Chris Collins, and if you would just raise a hand if we can see you. Kristen French. Kevin D. Hollingshed. Charles Montieth. Has he joined us?
No, not as yet.
Thank you. Courtney Waters. And for the Peninsula, voters countywide are going to select one candidate from this slate. Lee J. Bennett Jr., Regina Duggins, Lauren Hedrick, and Tony E. Lewis. Thank you. And for West Ashley, voters are going to select two candidates. We have Francis Marion Baylot III, Erica Coakley, Chris Frazier, Helen Frazier. I should say Helen Davis Frazier was going to read on the ballot, right? Charles Glover Sr. Has he joined us? I don't see him. He did not respond to our invitation. John R. Prelo.
Here.
Thank you. And Hunter Schimpf. We're going to begin with one-minute introductory remarks, and we'll start with the North area. And we'll start with Mr. Collins.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. So, my name is Chris Collins. I'm an incumbent on Charleston County School Board. I represent the North area, but our jurisdiction, once elected, we have countywide authority to represent all the schools in Charleston County and all the families. And I'm seeking your support for a fourth term. Some of our major accomplishments that I've accomplished with the school board has been that we established, we established reading academies under prior administration to help children that were, that were still in reading and behind, less than proficient. Just past couple of years, we started the, some math programs such as, we invested in Algebra Nation. Alex program designed to give own hands to, assistance to students. They can see how to do the math problems, how to solve them. As you know, in Charleston County, math and reading play a vast majority of our students, especially minority students. They suffer in reading and math and science. You know, we also, we've been investing more money in, in science teachers also a few years ago. So I'm hoping to continue serving the people of Charleston County.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Ms. French, your one-minute opening, please.
Hello. My plan going forward is to use a community schools model approach to improving our schools with some priority on neighborhood schools, which are particularly well-suited to this model. This way, we can support our students, our parents, teachers, and staff with the resources that they need to have a really good educational environment for our students. And in addition, I want to focus on not closing any more schools, especially, I want to prevent closures of African-American schools in urban, suburban, and rural areas. It's important that we listen to the neighborhoods to know what they need and listen to the school leadership within each school community to decide which resources this, the district should be providing. So I'll be working on getting those district offices at a better capacity to work with people that way and to have a better climate of listening and responding.
Thank you, Ms. French. And Mr. Hollingshed.
Hey, good afternoon. My name is Kevin Hollingshed. I'm your candidate out of North Charleston, incumbent, running for a second term. I take this very seriously on my running for reelection. As it took the first four years, I did some things that no other board member has done in the history of the board. I carried retired academic, then academians and community leaders stakeholders to Atlanta, Georgia to look at schools that mimic the Title I areas in Charleston County. Retired educators like Carol Temple, Joe Bowers, Jesse Williams, Shakim Aket, Amen, and others to look at schools. There were three schools in Atlanta, Georgia that mimicked our area. That's the best for women's. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, someone cut me off. That's the best academy for women's, a girl's school. I'm sorry, the Coretta Scott Academy for girls' schools, the best academy for boys, and the Hollis Academy. And the best academy, the, the school for girls, that's Coretta Scott King Academy, was featured on national news as 100% graduation rate, and, and the young ladies excelled on to college. The men's experienced a 87% graduation rate, and these are in poverty areas. So we need to kind of education advancement in Charleston County to improve our Title I schools.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingshed. Mr. Montieth, that's, has he joined us? All right, Ms. Waters.
Hi, everybody. My name is Courtney Waters. When I think about what motivated me to run for school board, I'm thinking about high school students going to graduation, walking across that stage and having that big moment, that pivotal moment where they've accomplished their, their biggest accomplishment to date, and then seeing that same student in August taking remedial classes, barely able to keep up with college coursework. And that's the bucket of cold water, really, that's, that's, that douses most of our students when they enter the world and realize that the school system didn't prepare them. And what's worse than that is that so many of our students don't even walk across that stage excited, but frustrated and relieved that they're walking away from a system that did not teach them that their culture mattered, that did not show themselves in the curriculum. I think we can do better than that for our students, and I think leadership is a difference maker. As a former teacher and a current nonprofit education leader, I worked very closely with education policy. I'm excited about the opportunity to infuse more DEI into the curriculum. Excited about the opportunity really to just make the conversation about all students.
Thank you, Ms. Waters. And now we'll, we'll go to the candidates running for the Peninsula seat. And remind you, voters will select one of these candidates. Mr. Bennett.
Good afternoon. I am Lee Bennett. I would like to thank Barbara Zia and the Charleston chapter of the League of Women Voters for putting this event together and extending the invitation to me. I'm seeking election to the Charleston County Consolidated School Board, the Peninsula. And if, if elected, I desire to provide a voice for the people, particularly those who may feel they have no voice at all. Was born and raised in Charleston, South Carolina, the fifth of six children. I was educated in the Charleston County's public school system. I possess more than 40 years of managerial leadership experience in complex and diverse organizations. And my priorities, if elected, are to strengthen communication between the school board, parents, educators, especially in this COVID-19 environment and beyond, and to provide effective and efficient operations that enhance academic achievements to ensure equitable academic opportunities for all students.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Duggins.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Regina Duggins, and I'm running for the Peninsula seat. I am currently a CCSD reading interventionist. I have over 25 years of experience working with youth individuals. I've also ran a daycare center here, and I've been in the nonprofit sector for several years. What really inspired me to run as a candidate is because I want to see change. I want to also make sure that there's diversity that is added across the board. I wanted to, I want to make sure that we are empowering our teachers and making sure that their autonomy is being expressed. I want to make sure that parents and students feel that they are supported by any candidate that is on the board. I also want to make sure that there's equity in our education and that there is priority, parity funding, not priority funding, that has been shown oftentimes within the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duggins. Ms. Hedrick.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Lauren Hedrick. I'm running for the Peninsula position. For the last seven years, I've been the executive director of Kids on Point, and we are an after-school and summer program primarily in downtown Charleston. What's unique about our program is we work with students, starting in the third grade. We follow them through late elementary, middle, high school, and then post-secondary, whether that's college or career. And through that work and extensive community partnerships, I've seen the successes and barriers at each level of our educational system. I'm here to build on those experiences and advocate to ensure that all children are receiving a quality education. Thanks so much. I look forward to engaging in this conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Hedrick. And Mr. Lewis.
Hello. How you doing? My name is Tony Lewis, and I'm running for the school board because I've been on this, this trail for 35 years as activist, 25 years as recreation coach, 12 years as constituent board. My theme is talk is cheap, action speaks louder than words. Action, thank God. Burke helped set Burke High School from getting taken, and the staff, Stony Field got dead. Name is school, that's what it's about. All that talk is cheap. I heard a lot of people talk, 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 okay? My goal is to help, these are my goals, to help CCSD support technology assistance for the parents, support teachers and staff who have this pay bill, satisfaction, school report card for all CCSD schools, and advocate for more vocational education now, high schools. I've been running, I'm running because I want to make sure all these scholars and students are academic inclined, no matter what their zip code is, because a lot of the academics shortfall is because of their zip code. And that's why I'm running, because I've been out here a long time, and I've been doing things for a long time. And I know I am the best candidate and qualify because I get phone calls every day.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now for West Ashley, voters will choose two candidates. Mr. Baylot.
My name is Francis Baylot. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. League of Women Voters is an essential resource for the community. Vote 411 is what I tell everyone to go through to cut through the negative and racist ads we're seeing on TV right now. I currently serve as, on the Health Advisory Committee at CCSD, where we unanimously passed a medically accurate and non-discriminatory new health education curriculum for the entire district. I'm a fifth-generation Charlestonians. I attended CCSD schools myself, first through the 12th grade. I have two kids currently enrolled in West Ashley Public Schools, and I have a master's degree in developmental psychology. I work for nonprofits and program development in the Commonwealth of Virginia, developing and evaluating programs from Wise County to Norfolk. I'm currently working in medical research at MUFC where I work on such topics as neuroradiology, child and adolescent anxiety, and other mental health issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Coakley.
Good afternoon. Thank you, everyone, and thank you very much for having me today. It's a pleasure. My name is Erica Coakley. I am running for the District 10 West Ashley seat. This is my first time running for any elected seat. I'm running right now for school board members to right now make parents be more involved. I came aboard and I got involved with this when I was noticing the lack of inequality and the diversity between our schools and education as a parent, and a product of South Carolina and public school systems, and raised through it, having three children right now. I want to make parents see what's going on right now. There's a dark money. There's things that are keeping our schools from becoming diverse. There are people that are trying to take over, and what I need parents to know right now is that we have to get involved so that we are the ones that are making these decisions for our children and not having decisions being made from the, from the top down. If you're not being involved in the community, having children that has a social, emotional, and a child that has autism, we have to focus on that. And if we're not listening to the people of the community, we won't ever get out of this loop. And that's why I'm here, to bring focus and voices from the community.
Thanks, Ms. Coakley. And now, Mr. Frazier, please.
Thank you, and I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting us today. It's unusual times. I'm humbled to be with all of you. Everybody clearly passionate about education. My name is Chris Frazier. I'm the incumbent on the West Ashley District. I have served eight of the last 12 years and would like the opportunity to continue my service to the community to support teachers and students. I've been passionately involved in education for 30 years, starting with my term on the District Two Constituent Board in the 90s, and that's also when I ran for the school board for the first time. So it would be an honor for me to bring my experience both as a business leader and as a board member back to complete my service to the community with my final term. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. And now, Ms. Frazier.
Good afternoon, and I'd also like to thank the League for having this forum so that we can better inform our voters. I am a 20-year retired employee of the Charleston County School District. I came here from Orangeburg, South Carolina, and I started the first Parent Resource Center and Child Development Center in St. Matthew, South Carolina. I brought a program down here initially when I started and started the first Parent Resource Center on the peninsula of Charleston. I am running for election as a school board member because I'm now serving on the constituent board level in District 23. I would like to see teacher parental involvement, increased teacher pay, more community engagement, accountability, and transparency. I'd also like to, like to say that I'm celebrating my 70th birthday here today with you guys. 50 of those years spent working with our children to, to improve our community. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier. And I believe Mr. Glover has joined us.
Yes, ma'am, I have.
Second introduction, please.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Reverend Charles Glover Sr. I live here in District 23, and also served on the school board now in my third term, serving the district, serving the schools and doing whatever's needed to, to bring about the changes in our school district where we've been falling short. My purpose of running for the big school board is for, to get diversity and get mental health into the schools. And not only that, seeing that the, the finance of the, the school budget is being spread abroad, abroad on the schools, especially the schools that, that don't need the assistant, let's, let's do more funding into the rural area because in the rural areas, constantly being cut short with funding. And we don't have the same thing that the other schools have. And, and being a part of the Charleston County School Board, I would like to see it being brought abroad across the district as a whole instead of several schools getting here and none over there. Let's, let's spread it out across the board. The schools that need additional funding, let's, let's give those schools additional funding instead of putting more money into school that does not need additional funding. And that way, we can have the same across the board, and then our kids would have the same thing that the other kids have. It's almost like one school having something and the other don't have anything. But if we all can come together as one and in agreement, we can have it done.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Mr. Prelo.
Good afternoon to the League and others that are watching. It's very important broadcast that is being handled for the community to be informed about the candidates that are running for school board. I am a candidate, and I've been involved with the community since I left high school, working full-time for the federal government, retired after 37 and a half years with the federal government. I've always been involved with the community as a volunteer individual because I care about my community. I care about the future of our children. I believe in quality. I believe in the inclusion. I believe in the transparency of our children, and I believe our children is given a, an opportunity to succeed that they will. I believe in the special programs that Charleston County has in place right now, the pilot program. I believe in STEM program. I believe in the ability to feed our children so that they can have a wholesome meal, so that they can be well-fed and that taking growth. I believe that we can challenge our children to the best opportunity that they possibly can. Everyone wants to succeed in life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prelo. And Mr. Schimpf.
Yeah, so thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting today. So I'm Hunter Schimpf, running for a West Ashley seat, and I'm a former high school math teacher, have a master's degree in education policy, and have served as an administrator of a public school district in South Carolina. I'm running for school board because I want to bring my background and experience in K-12 education and supporting quality schools for students and families to the Charleston County School Board. I'm running because I believe we must do a much better job as a community in educating all of our students and ensuring that they are academically prepared for college and career. Our student outcomes are nowhere near where they need to be, and we must have a laser focus on improving all of Charleston's public schools for all of our students. I emphasize "all" because we must urgently eliminate the gaps in student outcomes that we see among our students of color, our students living in poverty, and our students with disabilities. We must do a better job to treat our teachers as the professionals that they are. That involves raising teacher pay, but it's also much more than that. And finally, Charleston families need much better communication and more transparency and accountability from the school board. With that, I look forward to a constructive debate today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schimpf. And Mr. Montieth just emailed that he is unable to participate.
Question number three was, how does poverty affect your school district? What is an effective way to address poverty educationally?
Mr. Hollingshed.
Thank you. That is a very tough question, but I can give it to you in real-life terms. I live here in North Charleston on Meeting Street Road, which I actually grew up in, in the district. I coached within this area and dealt with parents. I have seen parents, and I have had kids sleep in my house when their parent cannot pay their light bill. It affects them mentally, just as well as economically. We have to find a way to be able to have to bridge the gap of wraparound services that take the stress off of parents. So we also need to be able to work with social service and other organizations to help bridge that gap. I think Ms. Waters and Ms. French both advocated and talked about wraparound services in that question. So, um, I've seen it. We have to do more to bridge that gap to make sure parents and children are stressed free when they're not in the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingshed. Shane, now would you please text me that question? Did everybody else in Room 1 for the North area get to answer that question?
Yes, they did.
All right, let's start with the Peninsula. I believe the Peninsula candidates have not addressed that question.
Right, right. So, Mr. Bennett, you would be the first one to answer that question about, and do you want to read it again, Barbara? I think I have it here. How does poverty affect your school district, and what is an effective way to address poverty educationally?
Yes, I, I guess I would say that we have to ensure that we have, it could affected by not ensuring that we have equitable academic achievement for, for students. And students should be able to do that regardless of their zip codes. We've talked about one of the examples certainly concerning internet access. And without the internet access, students can find themselves, even in this particular environment, even further behind. And we can't teach the standard programs like meal programs when students are not able to have those meals provided. They're not able to successfully be set in the right conditions to learn. So poverty could have those effects on education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Joan, go ahead.
Yeah. Ms. Duggins, you're next, answering that same question?
Yes, thank you. Poverty affects our children mentally, socially, and psychologically. But we help to bridge the gap by including, of course, they spoken about, and I'm true supporter of wraparound services. The needs to provide school counseling and to make sure that they are also having effective and healthy feeding programs. This helps to gear our kids up to know that they are loved. Children who are unable to receive quality meals also cause a greater deterrent to our children. But even in the most impoverished areas, we need equitable education, parity funding that will help capulate the issues. We need strong and supportive leaders at all time during this time. And I was a product of a public school setting in New York City, was able to thrive and to receive a doctorate. So if you put the right supports in a child's life early on, they can receive success. Thank you.
And Ms. Hedrick, next, the same question.
The impacts of poverty affect all academics. It's a critical thing that we need to address within our schools. I completely agree with Regina and Lee that wraparound support services are incredibly important, looking at universal pre-K options. So students have that access. So students have that access before kindergarten, that we have more extensive meal options, that transportation is a consideration, that we are working with after-school and summer programs to make sure that kids have those resources and that we're providing those opportunities for them to be successful in an in-school environment and that they don't have to think about the impacts of poverty when they're at school. So we have to work with it as a community to address those issues. And hopefully, we can do that together as a school board and to make sure that the emerging needs of students are a number-one priority.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And finally, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you. Well, my take on that is, you know, when we're limiting our resources, that's when poverty come about. Because of our resources plentiful, we wouldn't have to depend on wraparound services, no other services. But we have to be academic inclined so we wouldn't have to worry about poverty. And I call it limited resources, okay? Because I said, they always told me, if you teach a man how to fish, you wouldn't have to worry about being impoverished, okay? So you got to teach a man how to go out there and get a job and work on a job, okay? And case in point, Burke High School, when they had trade school in there, that was the perfect reason, perfect thing for kids to learn how, our schools and students, learn how to be academic inclined, to be financially fit. So they wouldn't be, as people call them, impoverished, all right? Because I'm tired of people putting numbers and stipulation and commodity on our kids. They're nothing but a number. Everything was always a program, a program.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Barbara. That's... Those are our candidates from the Peninsula for question three.
Okay, well, let's go now with the same question to candidates for West Ashley. And we'll start with Mr. Baylot. The question again was...
How does poverty affect your school district? What's an effective way to address poverty educationally?
Thank you.
You're muted, Mr. Baylot.
All right. So sorry. Poverty is the variable that has the greatest effect on student outcomes in terms of test scores, in terms of graduation rates. It has a greater effect than even... It's a complicated, multi-systemic issue that needs to be looked at from many different perspectives. But in the education realm, we already have models that we know can create a significant impact on that. And that is to reduce class sizes, have two teachers in every class, inspire parents to become more involved and create parent advocate positions and provide mental, dental, and physical health in the schools. We're doing that in some schools right now, but we're not replicating it in other schools. And that's a shame, and that's the $900 million question, really. Why do we just have these programs in one or two schools that we know that works, but yet we fail to replicate it across the district where it's needed? There's at least, there's more than fifteen schools that need that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Baylot. Ms. Coakley.
Thank you. As a parent and as a child coming to public schools, again, that poverty within the school systems, it doesn't just land within the people of color. So what I'm looking at it and the way it's fallen, it is falling with only in the people of color. So therefore, those are the only schools and those are the only places where those things are actually being addressed. Now, if we start to think and realize that it doesn't take a genius, then poverty and education goes hand-in-hand. When we start to put our things that we need to make our children to become academically inclined in every neighborhood school and not just particular parts of the school and not just particular zip codes, that way we have a win-win on the outcome. And that's what we're facing right now.
Thank you, Ms. Coakley. Mr. Frazier.
Thank you. I'd like to say ditto to a whole bunch of stuff, obviously, safety nets, early childhood learning opportunities, before-and-after-school programs, continuity of meals for children. But I think there's some other issues. Title I has limitations, for instance, on extra funding you can do only in the schools that meet the Title I threshold. And there are plenty of folks that come from disadvantaged communities in schools that don't meet that. We've got to shift general funding to those schools to make sure we're approaching the students, not just a bucket as a Title I bucket. The other part we have to do is to make sure there's no barriers to success in education in schools in high-poverty areas. And that's one of the things we've started to address by creating pathways through to our higher achieving academic schools. And we've just got to figure out ways to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Ms. Frazier. Unmute yourself, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. We all know that a school district is no stronger than its weakest link. What have we been doing here in Charleston County School District is placing our teachers with the most years of experience and our schools that are doing well. We need to do just the opposite. Each child in a high-poverty school need to see experienced teachers who care about them. I think that we need to shift this whole paradigm and put more money into our high-poverty schools to equalize the educational system for everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier. Mr. Prelo.
We know that the impoverished in our school district is an enemy to our children. It's a complex situation where it involving a lot of things involving from the child, starting at early start school, or kindergarten, you have a child that is starting out early in the morning, the sun has not risen yet, you have riding on long buses to school, long day interacting with other children, you having their ability to comprehend what's being taught by our teachers and taking that back home and parents spending time with their children as far as they're learning what was taught at school. So it's a multi-complex situation that impoverish our children. We need to get a better handle on why they're not excelling, why they're not achieving in school. And that needs to be addressed. And I think that collectively, as school board members, we can come together, work together with the superintendent, with the principals and teachers, and find out what is the root cause of our children not exceeding in an environment that they should be prospering very well. Because the tools that has been provided for them are there, is for them to take advantage. We have computers, we have books, we have early developments, teachers, we have individuals that are specialized in certain fields and areas.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Prelo. And Mr. Schimpf, the same question.
Thank you. So poverty is a challenge, certainly, but it's not an impossible challenge. So as a former teacher, an educator who's worked with high-poverty schools for over a decade, I'll just name four things for consideration that I think are important. So one, we really need to make sure that we're investing in high-quality early education development programs to ensure that gaps are minimal or nonexistent when students living in poverty get to the first day of kindergarten. We need to look at lowering class sizes in early elementary grades so that intervention and additional supports can be had for students living in poverty. Third, I think it's important that we study models that are doing this and having success with students living in poverty and scale that to more schools within CCSD. And fourth, I really think that we need a reset across the board of expectations for the adults in the system. That's leaders, again, to the point of it's not impossible. We can accomplish educating all students living in poverty and do it well. And we need the adults in the system to believe that that can happen.
Thank you. And Mr. Glover, the same question. How does poverty affect the school district and what is the most effective way to address it educationally? Mr. Glover, unmute, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can start over.
Okay. Just like I stated earlier, we need to be the same across the board when it comes down to finance. Then I'm sure that there are ways that we can allocate more funding into the poverty areas or into the rural area schools because that's something that's needed because the child is not going to be effective in school if he doesn't have the proper breakfast in the morning time. Because I'm understanding the breakfast is the main cause of a child when you're attending school because you may not get that at home. So when you come to school, you'll be able to sit down and eat something that way you can function properly. So my thing is that if we could go back and look at, instead of building bigger schools and putting money into building, let's focus on educating our children. Let's focus on the poverty areas where we can put the necessary money there, where we can get the teachers that we need, we can get the mental health that we need, we get the social workers that we need inside the schools where these kids could prosper more and be better effective as they go forth from early childhood up until high school. They need something to work with. If we sit back and don't do anything about it, but then nothing's going to happen. Break down these classrooms, twenty-five and thirty kids in a classroom for one teacher? That's insane. Put two teachers in the classroom. The child would learn better if you got more instructional time when you got two teachers in smaller groups. And we were constantly arguing that point about the classroom. Let's do it.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. I understand that not all of the candidates in the North, for the North Area got to answer this question. Is that correct?
They did get to answer it, but they didn't answer it to the broader audience.
All right, well, let's do it for the broader audience. Mr. Hollingshed has already responded to that question, correct?
That's correct.
Let's ask Ms. Waters. What in your, how in your view, does poverty affect the school district? And what's the most effective way to address it educationally?
Thank you, Barbara. I mimic a lot of the sentiments that have been shared so far. I think poverty impacts so much in a student's life, from nutrition to the way people see them, the way people, the assumptions people make about what they can do and how they can learn. Poverty limits so many different things. And I think what we have to do as adults is deal with children the way that they come to us and be prepared to meet them with the services that are available. And I think more important than anything, we need to meet them with the expectation that all students can learn, that they should learn. And really, I think when we're dealing in communities that are impoverished, we're dealing with communities that have been neglected in a number of ways. And so we've got to figure out how to provide broader community support and go beyond the borders of the schools to service them and give them the things that they need to be successful, whether that's reading programs, whether that's nutrition programs, whether it's social and emotional support. We need to just be prepared to be flexible and meet students where they are and not prescribe one-size-fits-all solutions because children and families are different.
Thank you, Ms. Waters. Mr. Collins, the same question.
Thank you. So poverty is one thing, but being hungry and lacking is another. And I don't know what you're referring to when you say Charleston County School District. But if a child is from a poor background, that child still can learn like anybody else. I grew up in poverty myself and went into college with the first one graduated out of my family. So the poverty alone is not the measurement, but if you're facing other social issues and health issues, that's a different story altogether. But we fail the children that are lacking academically by not giving them equity in the school district, not meeting the social, emotional, academic needs, that that's more critical than poverty itself, that we don't supply the resources when we have the ability to make smaller groups, put two teachers in a classroom, assistant teachers, reading specialists after school time, but with children one-on-one, that one-on-one makes a big difference. And so we're not doing those things on a broad scale where we need to.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. French.
Yes, poverty affects students all across our district, not just in North Charleston. And we do need to address this effectively. I think one very effective approach is working from the ground up, working with the school leadership, the teachers, the parents, the community members, to see how partnerships can help within those communities. And to understand that it's not just the kids that are affected, it's the whole community. When the community's hurting, the school hurts and the school community hurts. I also think we need to really think about the fact that a lot of our classified employees, the support staff are not getting paid a living wage. So we are already fostering a system that has poverty built into it. And that's not a good model for our community. So we need to look at this as well, teachers having to take on two jobs, support staff not getting paid enough. So it's a big, there's a bigger picture here that has to do with the whole community as well. And that's, we need to also consider how everything we do in the classrooms helps children to understand that this doesn't affect their worth or their ability to learn.
Thank you very much. I think all of our candidates have answered this question, correct? Let's move on to another question, and this will be our last one. This one comes from the audience. And we will begin with the North Area and Ms. Waters to respond first. What have you been doing and what will you do to advocate for fuller funding for public schools from the state level?
Thank you, Barbara. So in my work currently, I actually keep a really close eye on what's happening in education policy from the state level. And I think the biggest thing is making sure that we, that the school board has a good relationship with our Charleston Legislative Assembly, that we can send them to the State House and advocate for us when it's time. I think that Charleston County School District has a really great situation in that we've got legislators that support us and believe in the, in the, in the well, in the, excuse me, in the ability of all of our students to succeed. And we need to lean on them to advocate for us when it counts. I think beyond that, I know there are school board associations where all the school boards meet. And I think just sending the people into the room that can go in as a unified body and talk the same message, I think you get more done when you can get everybody on the same page and identify the problem correctly.
Thank you, Ms. Waters. And Mr. Collins from the North Area, do you need me to repeat the question?
Yes.
What have you been doing and what will you do to advocate for fuller funding for public schools at the state level?
Thank you. But what I'm going to do, and what I've been talking to legislators about already, that we need more money for our teachers. We need more money, especially now with the COVID-19 virus affecting their day-to-day lives, that they're in a minute in the school campus. We're not prepared for the virus. We need more funding. We need to hazard us pay for our teachers, our employees, the janitors, the cafeteria workers, data clerk, secretary, all that coming involved. We need money. And so what we have now is there's not enough funding, and we have some people working that are making too low wages. Those people that are in the cafeterias working through the mysterious virus, they're getting very low wages, some of them getting less than $12 an hour. And we have to change that and pay people, but for their work and for the work.
Thank you, sir. Ms. French, the same question.
Thank you. To advocate for fuller funding for our public schools, I think we do need to work with not only the Charleston Legislative Delegation, but we also need to work with our county government because they have services that could be utilized to help us as well. And they have a little bit more flexibility in how they spend the money sometimes than the school district, which is continually underfunded. I do think we need to really work, what I have done in the past is really work to advocate for candidates that I think will support better funding in our schools and full funding of the public school system across the state. I think we need to repeal Act 388. And I think that we need to look at building these relationships with the Legislative Delegation so that we can be smarter about how we use their money in the schools, but also to make sure we have plenty of the money that we're already legally required by law to have and we're not getting.
Thank you. Mr. Hollingshed.
Yes, ma'am. I'm here.
Please. The question is, what have you been doing and what will you do to advocate for fuller funding for public schools at the state level?
Well, I have a great relationship with the majority of the Charleston County delegation. As you can see, I was the only board member that was for a single-member district and advocated for it throughout the community, and the delegation responded. That brings equal access to people throughout Charleston County. As far as working with education for the delegation, that's a funding formula problem that derives throughout the state. The delegation has to find a way to get the other delegates across the state to be able to increase the funding formula or to balance it off of Charleston County. Now, we can work on resources within Charleston County School District to reallocate money toward teaching. And I think, and I'm for that, right now, we're too top-heavy in Charleston County School District. So there are several ways that we can do that, but we have So there are several ways that we can do that, but we have to assure trust within the delegation that that as layman, people on the board. That we do the right thing for our public to be able to trust us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hollingshed. And now the candidates for the seat on the peninsula. The same question will begin with Mr. Bennett. What have you been doing and what will you do to advocate for fuller funding for public schools from the state level?
Ben, starting from the beginning is having a greater understanding of the laws and policies that are available for our school system. Because one of our jobs as school board members is to ensure that the students get the best education possible from the tax dollars. And to continue to foster relationship with our state leaders to make sure that those goals are accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Duggins.
Sorry about that. I have been speaking with constituent board members, legislation, stakeholders, bridging connections with grassroots organizations and local businesses to support the policies for the needs for priority funding and not just priority funding. Making sure that it's replicated to all schools. I feel that we need universal pre-K. We need smaller classroom size and advancing the supports with individual educational plans. These are things that teachers can work on. More reading intervention and math interventionist, school leadership, strengthening parent associations. Making sure that school improvement counseling, there's youth counseling. But when we share all of this insight and come together, we can see that there's going to be a need for reallocation of funding. And to make sure that it's going to the programs and to the students that definitely need it.
Thank you. Ms. Herderick.
Yes, I'm an ardent proponent and working in collaboration and partnerships. That is a primary model of Kids on Point. I would take that same perspective in working with the school board and getting outside of the boardroom, working with legislators, working with our county and statewide officials. To ensure that we are promoting and advocating for higher teacher pay and adequate resources in all of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis.
Yes, ma'am. Well, I have a good relationship with all the delegation members, all. Not only them, the county, city, I'd like to bring all of them together. City of Charleston, Charleston County Government, the legislators. And find and the district and find out where we need the shot, we need the funding act. That we would delegate for them to get the tools and resources that they need. I'll share with you. I've I've lobbied for the change of bringing drawing the lines to get Rosemont to come downtown. And it was and I got a great feedback from the residents up there. You know, so I I have a real strong relationship with these delegation members. All of them, not only that, bunch of them in the legislature. I've I've known real well, about ten fifteen years, you know.
Thank you.
I think it's a strong, you know, strong candidate I can do that, you know.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lewis. And now we'll move to candidates for the two West Ashley seats. The same question. We'll start with with Mr. Clover. And that question is, what have you been doing? What will you do to advocate for fuller funding from for public schools from the state level? Please unmute.
I've been dealing with some some representative in Columbia at the State House level. And my thing is here, we need to go back and revise some things, reallocate where funding goes at. As far as in our school system and our school district, we need to start spending eight, nine hundred million dollars. Let us go and reallocate some of that money, place that money in schools instead of worrying about realty and realtors and and building more schools. Let us let us focus more on educating our children, making sure that they get the necessary things that they need. We can't do by taking the money to throwing it elsewhere and can't be accountable for it. So if we deal with the delegation where the fundings come down, let's have that money reallocated. Let's put more into our children's education and put it inside buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Mr. Prelo.
What I what I have been doing, and I understand that legislative, they actually understand by an example. And you have to lead and our folks into an environment that will be profitable. As the president of the Alumni Association of Baptist Hill High School, we have been working in the community. And where the schools have fall short as far as finances, we have donated a certain amount of money to to the Baptist Hill High School. For the high school students who have achieved academically so that they can be able to go to college. We have donated X number of dollars for the past seven years to our high school students who have excelled academically. So they can be able to move on to college and take care of themselves. It's small, but is to them is a lot. And it'll actually give them an opportunity to for a great start. On legislative level, they will see that we are, we care about our community. And I think that's the first thing to instilling pride and priority into our children and the community. Because the legislative sees that that you care about your community. I believe in more money will be allocated, not just to our community, but all of the community that are in need and that are struggling. You have businesses that are moving into South Carolina that Boeing and the Vought War.
Thank you, Mr. Prelo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Schimpf, the same question.
Yes, ma'am. So really, this, I believe, is a two-part question for the school board. I think one, which we really need to is in our control, is optimize existing resources. And we need to ensure that funding is equitable across the district, and we need to decentralize funding out of central office. There's fourteen to fifteen percent of overhead of a five hundred million dollar operating budget, and that needs to be directed towards schools and higher teacher pay. Secondly, in advocating for more funding at the state level, we need to prioritize salary increases for teachers. And I think we need to make it clear to the state legislature, I personally oppose private school vouchers. I believe the school board should take a stance that public funding for education should remain in the public system. And so I would support measures to do that and have relationships at the state level with legislators and members within the governor's office to advocate for those policies here on a local level.
Thank you, Mr. Schimpf. Mr. Baylot.
I already have relationships with members of the legislative delegation. I had the opportunity to work with Representative J A Moore to draft the Mental Health Education Act, which passed this year. Which will significantly reduce stigma around mental health issues in school and hopefully everywhere. I was extremely active in the single-member bill, which I think is important. I fought against four, at least four, highly-paid lobbyists from the Coalition for Kids who tried to kill that bill and keep the status quo. But I fought very hard to keep the the bill moving forward so that we can have adequate representation in our communities. And I will move forward, making sure the district lines are drawn in a way that's equitable and reflective of school communities. But the the main thing is we need to change leadership at the district. We need to change leadership at the board. And we need to make sure that people are ready to give us money because right now we're wasting too much money on consultants and fees and flavor of the month things. We need to stop wasting money. They're not going to give us more if we don't stop wasting it.
Thank you. Ms. Coakley.
Um, as a parent and through the, excuse me, through the activism that I've been doing in the community. I've actually, along with Francis, helped with the single-member bill district. So I'm actually building some of my relationships right now through my advocacy. I was also one of those people that got out there and fought for minimum wage to be pushed up. So when I go out here and I would advocate for teachers, I would advocate for teachers. And also, we have to advocate for the reallocation of the way the funds are being spread across the across the community because the funds are actually there. We build those relationships, not just countywide, but state-wise, and also with the parents and the people in the community. And again, we just do that going forward and making sure that the people of the community are the ones that are making decisions of how the funds are being allocated.
Thank you, Ms. Coakley. Mr. Frazier, same question.
I think somebody mentioned earlier, Act three eighty-eight has has to have another look, and it absolutely does. It took away complete flexibility for the school district and funding. Charleston County is a donor district by virtue of the tax value in the county, and so we send more money to Columbia than we get back. So not to take away from other communities that need it, but the states got to step up and do it. And we've got to illustrate that to the state leaders. I would partner with business community leaders as I have done throughout my career. Everybody knows that I've been involved with the Chamber in Economic Development Activities. The employers in the region who employ everybody that goes to work every day have a very loud voice. We need to engage them to help us solve our problem. And those people working with us can be very effective in terms of changing the funding formula. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. And Ms. Frazier.
Thank you so much. I have been working diligently contacting our legislators in reference to the constituent district concept. I think we need to revamp that entire system. And if we're not going to give them more power, then just disband the whole system altogether. Secondly, I lobby for the lottery funding to be distributed evenly for especially for K through fourth grades. Right now, lottery funding is being used for scholarships for people who can really afford to pay for their own education. And more importantly, we need to be accountable and transparent on how we are spending what we already have. And I think that once we tell our legislators and and our constituents that we are going to be frugal, we are going to be equitable in the way we are handling your past, your dollars. Then we will be able to provide equality education for all of our students.
Thank you very much. And now it's time for closing sixty-second statements. We're going to go in reverse order from the opening statements. And we will start with Mr. Schimpf. Excuse me, Mr. Schimpf. Deborah, do you want to continue being timer? Thank you. Okay. Mr. Schimpf, sixty-second closing, please.
Yeah, thank you, Barbara. So I'll just reiterate my background. I've been a high school math teacher and educator. And really feel a sense of urgency that we must improve our public schools in Charleston for all children. And we must focus on that work with no delay. So I believe my experience in education, being involved in promoting quality public schools over the last decade is the kind of experience that voters are looking for on the school board. I really believe we need to focus on better communication with parents and communities and ensure the the district is transparent and accountable to voters, to communities. That involves financial transparency, greater transparency around academics. And we have to have a laser focus as a community, again, on student outcomes, especially for our most vulnerable students in the district. So if elected, I'm going to work hard every day to move the needle for students.
Thank you, Mr. Schimpf. And also for West Ashley, Mr. Prelo, one minute, please.
Yes, as I said earlier, one of the important things is that we must focus on our children, put them first at hand and work collectively with with all the groups, all of the constituent boards. And and those are on the board, and we must continue to focus and on things that we have never touched before. And one is that there is outside community that we can actually engage them to come into and support the school financially. Businesses that are actually coming into the area, we could actually count on them also to what is our responsibility as a South Carolinian, to focus on our children, to give them the proper edge and give them a chance in life so that they can be able to move on and be productive in life and take their rightful place. This planet is not our home, and we must continue to realize that there are children that are coming after us. And they must have things in place, they must take over, and we must prepare their lives so that they can be able to prepare their children's lives. And it's and this is a dominant domino effect that we must be able to drive this home. And we must work. One of the important things that we must work collectively to solve the problem at hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prelo. Mr. Glover. Mr. Glover. We will. Mr. Glover, unmute yourself, please. Your one-minute closing.
Could you repeat that question?
This is this is a chance for you to make a closing statement, sixty seconds.
Okay. As a candidate of Charleston County School Board, I would like to work towards making Charleston County School Board a better board where we can serve the district better. And taking care of the matters of the district, making sure that everybody get treated the same across the board. And and that's with education-wise. Previous years, it's always been short forward, fun here and there, but I pray that we would come together and make the right decisions on the allocation of funding throughout the district, making sure that no child is being left out or deprived of the education. Doesn't matter whether you're in a rural area or you up in the in the and live in the city limits. We just want to have the proper funding where proper funding is needed. That way, our children can strive more and look forward to better education and to a better life. And I pray that we can work together as board members to come to agree, just as much as disagree, to make Charleston County a better school district than it is.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Glover. Ms. Frazier, your closing.
Yes, Barbara, and thank you again. I'm running on a platform that encompasses increased parental involvement. Increase in teacher pay, more community engagement, accountability, and transparency. Also believe that we have to do a better job of developing partnerships with our communities and not farm out our schools to dark money thinking that they're going to do a better job of educating our children.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier. Mr. Frazier, your closing statement, please.
Thank you, Barbara. And I want to thank the league again and also all of the candidates today for their passion for education. And I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity to volunteer my service to the community. We've got some enormous challenges and opportunities facing education and students, especially right now. I reflect on my eight years of military service, which taught me to run towards problems, not away from them. And so I'm ready to do that. I'm ready to tackle these issues now fairly, responsibly, and promptly. And I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
I thank you. Ms. Coakley.
Um, thank you again, Ms. Barbara, for having us this afternoon. Again, I just want to say, I hear everybody saying the platform, the platform that I have, other than parental involvement and accountability and, you know, bringing forth the voices of the community and being the voices for those that are also haven't been heard. I'm also running because I want parents to pay attention to what's really going on right now. This school election is just as important as our presidential election. And if we don't wake up and pay attention, our children are going to be non-existent. That's what's happening right now. We have things that are going on in this system that if we do not wake up and pay attention and bring the light, the diversity, the inequality, the ineffectiveness of what's happening. We're going to continue to be in this loophole again in the next twenty years, and that's what I do not want. Having two black children and a son that has autism. So going forth, this is what I want from you. I want to be your voice, and I also want parents to know, we got to wake up and we have to get a seat to the table, not just as women, but also as African-Americans. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coakley. Mr. Baylot.
My opponent was first elected to the school board. My son was wearing diapers and nursing. He just started shaving last week. And I, anything has gotten better. I think it's gotten worse. And I think if you look at the West Ashley Middle School that was built, that wasn't even big enough. I think we just need to wipe the slate clean. We need new members of the board. We need new leadership in the central office, and we need to do that now. And we need to start by setting a better example in West Ashley by replicating successful programs like Ashley River Creative Arts and St. Andrews School of Math and Science into all of our elementary schools and building a pipeline that will create an excellent group of students coming through West Ashley High School. Which West Ashley High School has the largest outflow of students in the district. So something's wrong in West Ashley, and I want to focus on that and set an example for the rest of the district to improve and move towards excellence and equity for the next decade. Thank you.
Thank you. And those are the candidates for two seats in in the West West Ashley area. And now we'll get closing statements from candidates for downtown peninsula. And Mr. Lewis will ask you first. Sixty seconds, please.
Well, Barbara, thank y'all. Well, my thing is, Barbara, I've been a long life servant of people for the people needed it. of people, for the people that are, the rights to have a voice and what transpired in their lives, no strings attached. What you see in Tony Lewis, that's when you get man of actions, okay? For all of our scholars and students, parents, the whole nine yards. But I'm being very passionate about the scholars and students' education to become productive citizens, to be academic inclined, okay? Because we have a lot of people do a lot of talking, but nobody knows putting that in the actions, okay? It's about actions. And I will be a strong steward, stewardess of our public taxpayers' dollars. Because our public taxpayers' dollars are being unified, okay? But it need to be put in the good action of making sure all our scholars and students have the same resources and tools they need, no matter their zip code. Because again, we play the zip code game. Look over at my place. Look at Stony Field. We've been begging for 70-something years. After that, I worked with the rest of the board members, county board members, Mr. Frazier was on that board.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Ms. Herderick.
Yes, Barbara and the league, thank you all for having me today. I really appreciate it. For everyone that's tuned in on Facebook and here directly, thank you for your time. And then to all the candidates, I really commend all that you are doing in promoting education. My name is Lauren Herderick. I'm invested in working with the community, parents, schools, teachers, to ensure that all students have a quality education, no matter their zip code, race, or household income. And I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Duggins.
Thank you to the league. I want to make sure that there's equitable education, communication, transparency, and education of our students that needs to be of top priority. But we need qualified teachers with an attractive salary that will match nationwide teacher support for livability and sustainability concepts. When we show the same amount of love in a reflective, diverse, and comprehensive curriculum, it is then when we will see the closing of the achievement gap, ending the prison, the pipeline. We will also see academic growth in our school system. If elected, I will work hard to support the teachers, administration, parents, and children throughout Charleston County School District. Our children need to know that there is someone out there that is fighting for them first and wholeheartedly caring about them, the betterment of their lives. And we need to know that our children are the future.
Thank you, Ms. Duggins. Mr. Bennett, your closing.
Yes, I hail from a family where three of my siblings have dedicated 135 years as educators collectively. In addition to my 40 years of managerial and leadership experience, I also served as the Deputy Chief of Staff of the White House Office of National Job Control Policy. And there I worked as the agency's expert on management, financial, and administrative matters. I bring an open mind and valuable experience with empathy and high expectations for all the students, but especially those who are struggling for a fair chance at an, that an education can provide. I will respect those who provide the educational services and respect all of the parents who have entrusted the learning process to our care. Again, thank you, Barbara Zia, and the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. And now we'll hear from the candidates for the two, two North Area seats. We'll start with Ms. Waters. Your one-minute closing, please.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you to the league and thank you to everybody out there listening. When I was a classroom teacher, I did not yet have a daughter, but I had a teacher who talked next door to me who used to always say that she was teaching her classroom like she was teaching her child, that she wanted to create an environment that she would feel comfortable sending her child into. And that's how I feel about the district, especially as a new parent. I want to be able to create a district that I feel very comfortable and proud to send my own child into. And at the end of the day, we all have a lot of great ideas about what it will take to build a better school district. But I think what's important for voters to remember is that members of a board do not have power as individuals. We only have power when we can come together and build consensus and work together to move the needle for children. And so as you think about what you want to do with your vote this year, and it's very important, we know that we have so many solutions that need to be implemented now. We know that we need budget review. We know that we need restorative justice practices in our schools. But I want you to think very clearly about how you can elect a board that can go into the room and work together on your behalf.
Thank you. Mr. Hollingshed.
I tell you, you always get me with the blind side, huh? I want to thank the League of Women Voters and Ms. Barbara. You know, I'm not going to give this grandstand speech of why you should vote for me. I think the last four years, my work and experience in my community speaks for that. Karen, dignitaries to Atlanta, Georgia, raising the money and using my own personal money to, to let people see where schools can exist and proceed. I come from a family of educators. My late sister Karen Hollingshed Brown was the principal at EB Ellington that had significant gains when she was principal. My late wife Monica was a teacher nominated at Mitchell Elementary for raising the bar of education in her class. I know what it takes and understand what, what we need in our community to have successful schools. Teachers and students have to be comfortable in their environment. They have to be greeted with love and respect. And then they yield out their product, which we see as success. We have five years in this county and you can look at the numbers. The numbers are there.
Thank you.
A failing scores. So again, thank you, Barbara. I had to get that one in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingshed. Ms. French.
Thank you to everybody in the league for making these forums happen. As a scientist and a community advocate, and someone who has experience in community-based research, I think we need to look at the problems that our district is facing as issues of environmental justice. We need justice in the environments of every community school. We need all of our schools to be treated like communities because it's not just about the kids in the classroom. It's not just about the teachers in the classroom, but the staff, the parents, and the community members. So I want to ensure that parents don't have to choose to find quality education for their children outside their neighborhood school. I want to support the whole school community and listen to them and provide the resources they've identified that they need. And I also want to ensure that public health data is used at all levels to help us deal with this pandemic, illnesses in the future, and other pandemics that may have, may not occur. We can do this together. We know how to do this. We have people on the ground that really understand their schools and know how to help them be better. So I hope that you'll consider me and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. French. Mr. Collins.
Thank you. I'm Reverend Chris Collins. I'm seeking another term in the Charleston County School Board. It is my mission to keep our schools public and transparent with higher pay for teachers and all employees, hazardous pay for all employees working through COVID-19. We need to do better with resources throughout our district, entitled one and titled two schools. Also, I oppose the work, not of, not of individual candidates, but I oppose the work of the Charleston Kids Coalition, the Coalition for Kids. I do not agree that we should privatize our school district, privatize or close schools or put them in different categories where teachers have to weigh their rights to work there, where parents will have access to information. So I'm not against the candidates. I'm against the operation, the work, the agenda of the Kids Coalition. And parents need to know that a vote for the Coalition is a vote to close and privatize schools. We need public schools here in Charleston County, need transparent, safe schools that feed and educate all of our children while communities can be involved. We need community involvement and parent involvement, not privatization.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Thank you. I like thank everybody for taking the time to hear from our candidates. And thank you for your patience and persistence. Dealing with technology these days in a virtual environment is, is always challenging. Thank you to our volunteer team who works so hard to make this candidate forum a possibility. And most of all, thank you for, to our candidates for running because you, you do truly make democracy work by running for public office. We encourage voters to study the issues carefully, to learn about the positions of each candidate. You can go to vote411.org, the league's voter information website, and read about the candidates on that site. And then vote for the candidates of your choice on November the 3rd. Thanks so much to our candidates. And now please turn on your audio and video and give them a warm virtual round of applause. Thank you. Enjoy the rest of the day. Awesome.